Well, it is 7:30, John. Do you want to get going, or do you want to wait just another minute?
I think we'll start. Folks can join on.
Okay. Do you want me to give a little briefing about how to use the Zoom meetings?
Yes, please. And if you could introduce yourself, that would be very nice.
Sure. Good morning, everybody. My name is Michelle Byrd. I'm the Public Affairs Director for Larimer County. I'm just going to be your Zoom host this morning, so I'm kind of the one running the technical stuff behind the computer. Just a few things you might notice that this is a little bit different than maybe some of the other Zoom meetings you've been a part of. This is actually a Zoom webinar, so you'll notice that you only see the faces of Commissioner Kofalos and myself. And you'll also notice that there's no chat box down below. The reason we do it this way is it's actually a little bit safer. I know probably all of you have heard about Zoom meetings being bombed. And so these kind of securities help us so that we, no one can get in and kind of take over our meeting and do unsightly things in our meeting. So we have a couple of different ways that you can participate. You'll notice that you have an option to raise your hand. If you go ahead and do that, you want to speak, I will announce you and unmute you, and you'll be able to talk that way. The other way, you can use that Q and A feature down below. So that's another way that you can ask questions as well. If you're on the phone and you can't raise your hand, what you do is you hit star nine, and that'll raise your hand for you. So, without further ado, Commissioner Kofalos, go ahead.
Thank you, Michelle. Good morning, everyone. I, I hope you are doing well. I'd like to provide some highlights, some updates as far as the county in relation to the COVID-19 public health situation, and really open it up to hear from you. I, I thought this would be a great opportunity to, for folks to share how they're doing personally, how businesses are doing in Wellington. I'm particularly interested to know how the T-Bar Inn is faring, and I look forward to when we can actually get together again in person, hopefully sometime later this summer. But from the county perspective, a couple of things that I'll highlight. First of all, let's see. So it was March 9th, March 9th, when the Larimer County Health Department, we were, we received information, we were alerted to the first presumptive COVID-19 positive case. And so we have actually been at this now for about 90 days, almost three months. And on the success side, happy to report that overall, we've done a very good job. Our health department folks, our emergency operations center folks, our, and Michelle is part of that team, our economic and workforce development folks, all have been collaborating with other, other partners in the communities to flatten the curve. You hear that term a lot, but what it means is, it means a lot of things, but in particular, it means that we're seeing fewer COVID-19 positive cases. We still continue to see more cases, but part of that is because we have now begun antibody testing, and that's why you may have read in the paper that there was a bit of a surge based on folks. You know, we break out the cases now to confirmed, suspected, and probable. But overall, we've done a great job of flattening the curve. There are less hospitalizations. There are less uses of ICU beds. And, and so the, you know, the shifting from stay-at-home to safer-at-home, and now as we begin, continue the transition of reopening businesses, supporting people to go back to work, you know, we continue to see a positive direction as far as indicators that we've put in place, because we don't want to go backwards, we want to keep going forwards. So that's the good news. The good news is that we are, we've done a good job, and we have confidence that we can continue to move in the direction of allowing for our businesses to reopen. You've, you've seen that restaurants are able to do in-person dining, both inside with limitations and certainly outside. And I'd be interested to know how Wellington is adapting to that. So, so that's, you know, I think that's all very positive. A few other things I would add is that the courthouse building, 200 West Oak, we did open the building this past Monday. And so now with various public health protocols, folks are entering the building to conduct their business. They are entering from the Oak Street or the south side. That entrance is open, and they are able to get their license plates or their registration renewals, or visit with other people in that building, the planning department, et cetera. They're able to do that in person before they had to set up an appointment. Once they're done with their business, then they're supposed to exit out of the north, the north doors. They're on Mountain Avenue. So that's, in my mind, that's a plus. On Tuesday, we had our first administrative matters meeting in the, in the hearing room downstairs on the first floor, which we typically don't do that, of course. And we were also allowing for folks to attend in person spaced out six feet apart. So we had our first hearing. We had, I think, at least two people from the public who attended that administrative matters. Well, and, and actually, if we count Michelle, that would be at least three. But there were folks who were not county employees that were there. So that, that, in my mind, is a positive. You've probably read that we're making progress on figuring out how we can conduct the Larimer County Fair, the 4H activities, the livestock showings, and, and we, we have gotten approval from CSU, because Larimer County Extension, of course, is tied in with CSU Extension. And we've gotten approval that gatherings can be up to 50 people. And then it's possible that in some of the buildings where we are trying to set everything up, we might be able to have up to 175 people. So we're, we're moving forward with allowing for 4H projects and activities, events to occur. The commercial side of things, frankly, that's where the money is made, because typically the county has to subsidize the, the fair side of things, which is really important to the kids and their families and the community. But the commercial side, which includes the professional rodeo, the carnival, vendors, all those kinds of things, at this point, we're really not sure what's going to happen there. You know, they, they typically, the, the folks who participate, the vendors, et cetera, generally follow a circuit. And, and because other events have been canceled, like Cheyenne Frontier Days, for example, it becomes harder. But we are moving forward with the, with the fair as best as we can. We'll have more details, you know, in the, in the coming days and weeks. And I, I guess I'll, I don't know, I'll stop there and, and just see if there are questions. And indeed, I'd like to hear from people to see how they're doing, you know, in terms of their families, in terms of their businesses. Thank you.
All right. So it looks like we do have a question. Rebecca has asked, can you give us any direction on how to apply for, or get clear direction on how to proceed with our Independence Day celebrations, parade, vendor fair, firework, viewing?
Thanks, Rebecca. And I know that you posed this question a while back, and I'm wondering if you got any kind of a response, because one direction I would give you, which I think I gave in the past, was that if we, if you go to the county website where it says variants, there are some specifics there, and Michelle can help me with any more details, but there are ways that, you know, a business or a community can put in a request to see how the Fourth of July, for example, the Fourth of July events in Wellington can, can or cannot occur. Rebecca, have you had luck doing that? Has there been any kind of a response?
Rebecca, I'm going to unmute you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Hey, John. Hey, Michelle.
Hey, Rebecca.
So, I wonder if John Gator is on, because he may have more insight on this, because he's on the Community Activities Commission. But I think that we're kind of in a, a point right now where we're just planning as if everything will occur, with the idea that we would get direction if that could not be the case. But I, I'm hoping that we can do more proactive efforts to seek that variance or research that as well.
Have you submitted, has the town of Wellington, with your help and John's help, have you submitted an actual variants request to the, to the county folks?
Not that I'm aware of, though. I can definitely take that back and see if we can get that submitted as soon as.
I would get on that right of way, right away, and, and I can certainly work with Michelle to see if there's any follow-up on our end. But I would really encourage you to get that in there. And then, of course, I expect that you would get a timely response, but I think that's the, the best step forward. I can also say, Rebecca, and colleagues, neighbors, that there are some preliminary discussions between the county and, and various municipalities, you know, for example, Loveland, et cetera. And I don't know if we've reached out to Wellington, but some preliminary discussions about maybe having some kind of a regional Fourth of July celebration, possibly out, out at the ranch, you know, in those areas that are not being leased by the state, you know, for the alternate care site. So those conversations are occurring, and, and there are some ideas on how that might happen in a way that is, you know, that protects public, public health safety and welfare.
That's very exciting.
Is there anything you wish to add, Michelle?
No, I think you, you covered everything, Commissioner. I think you got it all. It looks like, if we're ready to move on, it looks like Steve Sarno has his hand up. So Steve, I am going to unmute you now, and keep in mind, if you muted yourself, you might also have to move your, mute your, unmute yourself.
There we go. Good morning.
Good morning, Steve.
Hi, John.
Hey.
John, I've got, obviously, there, there are a lot of things on a lot of folks' minds these days, and, and I'm sure I'm not the, the only one out there. But a couple of situations that I wanted to talk about as briefly as I can, and finish with a question that is not going to be a rhetorical question. It's a question I really would like to have an answer on. You know, a couple of weeks ago, as recently, there were a lot of protests around the country and, and places and states, and these were people who were protesting the restrictions, and these people just wanted to go back to work, save their businesses, feed their families. There were no, there were no riots. There was no looting. There was nothing. And a lot of these people were actually arrested or threatened to be arrested for just wanting to go back to work. These people were vilified by a majority of the pathetic media that we have, calling them unpatriotic, un-American, dangerous, et cetera, et cetera. A majority of your party, John, quite honestly, vilified these people, and, and they were, they were just downright nasty to a lot of these people who just wanted to go back to their businesses. And now we have a lot of, why don't call them protesters, the rioters, that now are put up as heroes by the same pathetic media and a lot of people on your side. And, you know, the, the COVID evidently went away last Monday. It just must have disappeared, because all of the concern about, you know, from the, the media and a lot of leaders on your side, quite frankly, John, about COVID, people gathering, all of a sudden, it must have just went away, because that just disappeared. You know, the, the concern was gone, you know, and, and I'm just questioning. And I don't know why a lot of people on your own party won't question things, John. I mean, maybe there's a secret, super-duper-secret oath that you take to become a Democrat, saying that you promise to never, ever, 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 under any circumstances, question any other Democrat regardless of what you think, because there are some decisions out there that are being made that are just bizarre. I mean, the governor of California that opened up the beaches and said you can walk in the wet sand, but not the dry sand? I'm thinking, and I never heard anybody question that. So here's, here's my, my question, I guess.
Yes.
Decisions that are made and being made in the past and moving forward, particularly about the COVID, what specifically are they based on? I mean, all our leaders come out and say, based on the science and data, this is what we're going to do. Well, John, in 35 years of my career, I read literally hundreds and hundreds of clinical studies in dozens of journals. I know how to find stuff. I know how to, to read a clinical study. I have exhausted my research. I can't find this. There are no studies to justify what we're doing. I would like to know. I've, I've asked the governor's office. I've asked our state health department. I've asked our local health department. And all I have is, if I could just somehow do the crickets chirping, that's all I get. And all I've asked, I've been extremely respectful, just saying, when you say that your decisions are based on science and data, would you please be specific and tell me exactly what science and exactly what data? When you look at these lockdowns, John, you look at like South Dakota, they never did a lockdown. They, they, they depend on people's personal responsibility. Like, wow, there's something different. And they've had the lowest, one of the lowest mortality rates of any state in the country. They had some hotspots, some packing plants, they dealt with it. Sweden had no lockdowns, again, lowest mortality rate per capita in the world. So a lot of these power things, I think, are, the, the people are just, they're, they're just tired of it. And I'm, I'm very, very concerned, like I said last week. The people that are making these decisions on people's livelihoods, they're not being affected financially in any way, shape, or form. The governor, the health department, local health department, yourself, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but these people aren't suffering, dying financially, not a dime. And to now say that the, that the restaurants are going to allow them to come back to 50%, I assume during this time that the state and county restricted businesses from opening, I'm sure going to assume that they're going to rebate their property taxes, and now that they're only able to be open 50%, I assume that they're going to rebate 50% of all that they pay the government, since the government is restricting them to make the amount of money that they want. So my question is this. It's not rhetorical. I would just love to have somebody provide me the science, and not just me, the American people that are being affected. I'm fortunate. I'm not being affected financially, but a lot of people are, to provide us the specific science and data that these decisions are based on. And when we're talking about canceling things down the road based on models, for goodness sake, every flipping model that's been used is so far-fetched and so inaccurate, yet for some reason, we keep going back to these models. It's insane, you know, the, the definition of insanity, for crying out loud. I mean, at some point, we've just got to have more answers than, you know, it's not, you know, our governor's not a king. He's elected. He's elected officials. So I'll shut up, but I, I would really like to have that science and data, not just for me, but for everybody that's being affected. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Well, first of all, well, in terms of the data, one of the things I received from the state just the other day was based on a, I mean, they, they do these, these meetings with electeds and others, and, and also the governor, you know, does these press conferences, but it's, it's a PowerPoint presentation that I think provides some of the information. You're talking about modeling data and what the state is basing their decisions on, and we have similar modeling data at the county level. Would it be helpful for me to send to you this presentation, and you could examine the data that is included and what, you know, what the decisions are being based on?
I, I guess I go back to, are these?
Yeah. Yeah. You, you brought up, Steve, about science and data, and I'm suggesting that, I, I know, it's probably not going to satisfy you, and a lot of folks that share similar concerns, but from my perspective, we're not making decisions just because it's, you know, a certain day of the week, and all of a sudden, we feel like making that decision. You know, it's, it's a tough one, Steve, because, as I said earlier, in Larimer County in particular, and that's the lens that I use a lot these days, because that's my position, we've actually been very successful at lowering hospitalizations, you know, people getting sick. We've, we've been very successful at increasing the testing capacity. You know, we're at a 7% or so infection rate, and also this whole contact tracing that you hear about. So all of those things are based on science and data. And, and so I'm happy to, I, as soon as we're done, I can forward you this, this PowerPoint. And you also said, it's not just information for Steve Sarno, it's information for the public. And I know not everybody spends their whole, their whole day on, on the web, on the internet, but all this information, you know, the modeling data, et cetera, and, and what the, the state is basing its decisions on is on their website, you know, at the state level, covid19 dot Colorado dot gov or something. Maybe Michelle can help me with that. And then we have similar kinds of data on the county website. That's, but let me know if you want me to send you this particular presentation, or if anyone else is interested, or, or maybe there's a way that I, it could be posted on this, the Q and A portion of this. But it's a, it's a, it's a document that was sent to us, but I imagine there's a link to it somewhere.
Steve, you are able to unmute yourself.
There we go. Is that better?
Yes, Steve. Yes.
You know, when I, when I say science, to me, and it should be everybody, is a study that is done, that's credible, that's published in a credible journal, that's reviewed by peers, and then decisions should be based on that. These, all, all the science, and I'd be, I'd love to see this. If, if there's some science out there, like I said, I'll be the first one to apologize. And I, I'm, consider me very skeptical about the science out there. But again, you, you know, what, what about the, the places that didn't do shutdowns, and they showed even better results? So that sort of puts a hole in this soul science thing. But if you, if there's a good set of, of science and data, that means it was a very well-designed, and I can get into all the things I want to bore people about how a good design study is, how it's conducted, how it's published, and then how it's reviewed. And then that is used to, to make decisions. All these models, if you look at, we haven't had a COVID virus, so how can there be science? I mean, it, sometimes it takes months and years to, to, from completion, to completion date, to get a data, get that out there. So to say that they have data is absurd, because we haven't had it around long enough to know, you know, what, what to do with it. So these models, if you look at the, the original models that we had at the University of Washington that were so incorrect, I mean, they, they predicted millions of deaths because of this. And, and so it's, you know, I, I, yeah, send me, send me the data. But, you know, I think it's a shame to sort of pull a wool over people's eyes and say, yeah, we've got this great science and data, but we're not going to sell it. Why, you know, when I've requested it, why, why haven't I heard anything? Why do people ignore it?
I, I don't know, Steve. I can't answer all those questions. I can send you that information. And, and I know that, you know, for example, you know, you know, the governor, Polis, made the decision recently to extend the safer-at-home, and that we're continuing to pull back on the restrictions, the protective measures, depending on what lens you use here. And, and what, what I understood is that, you know, going from where we were a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago, that he was waiting until May 25th, because we needed three generations of data. You know, part of the deal with this coronavirus, as I understand it, and certainly I'm not a public health, I'm not an expert, that's not my field. We have to trust in the people that, you know, that do this work. But indicating that the coronavirus is very unique, I think we can all agree upon that. And in terms of the, the timeframe for when it's detected and, and the testing occurs, and if someone is symptomatic or asymptomatic, there, there can be a two-week lag period in there. So part of what I think what was happening at the state level is before, before the state decided to ease up more on the restrictions, they wanted to see three generations of data, you know, Colorado-specific data in terms of, are we increasing hospitalizations? Are, are we increasing the, you know, the capacity of ICU beds? And, and the data that we received over that three-week period, or that they received, indicated that we're continuing to flatten the curve. And that gave, that gave the state and the county more confidence in, in moving in the direction of, you know, getting more people, getting people back to work, frankly. That's the best I can do, but I'll, Michelle, I don't know if, if there's a link, or I'll certainly send that information, a document to Steve.
Yeah, we can definitely send that document out to everybody that attended today, because we have a registration report. I was also going to say too, in an effort to move on to some other people that have raised their hands or, or made statements, Rebecca actually put a little update in the Q and A I wanted to bring everyone's attention to in case they missed it. But she did say that, that there's an update regarding business, business expansion to sidewalks of our restaurants and retail. The town is accepting applications and working with each business on a one-on-one basis. They will be advertising for additional applications. Guidance and context were very helpful moving forward. Thank you.
Yeah. I, I thank you, Michelle, and thank you, Rebecca. I'm curious, how is the T-Bar Inn holding up?
Commissioner, I have a couple of people with hands raised, so let's go to them. And then if, if Rebecca wants to raise her hand and talk about that, I'd ask that she do that. Or if anybody else wants to raise their hand and talk about that, I'd ask that they do that. But first, we're going to go to DB McDaniel. So DB, I'm going to allow you to talk. And then just keep in mind that you might have to unmute yourself additionally. So go ahead and unmute yourself, DB, and you should be able to talk. Okay, let me try to unmute you, DB. You're going to have to unmute yourself, DB. There's a little mute button in the bottom-left corner of your screen. Okay, DB, we can't seem to hear you, so what I'm going to do, I'm going to keep you able to talk while you work on trying to get yourself unmuted. We're going to go to John Gator. John, I'm going to allow you to talk now, and you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay. Can you guys hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So really quickly, John, I wanted to say thank you again for continuing to just do these meetings and speak with people in the community. I appreciate that. I did want to bring up something real quickly regarding the Fourth of July and the communications that we've had so far with the county health department. The reason we have not submitted a variance yet is we have been, from what I, I have not been the person communicating. It's been other members of the CAC, but it's been made fairly clear that variances are only allowable and an option for events that are under 50. And obviously, our Fourth of July celebration is something where we're usually talking about thousands of people that attend that. And so the reason we haven't submitted a variance yet is because it's been made fairly clear to us that, you know, variances are only an option for events that are up to the size of 50. And obviously, there's a huge jump from, you know, 50 to a couple thousand people at minimum that would potentially be taking part in our Fourth of July celebration. So I would love to, if we can actually get some options with that, I would love to be able to do that. But that's the reason we have not submitted for a variance yet, is because we're just kind of continuing. We, we haven't been told, no, we can't have it, but we've been continually told, well, these are only applicable to something that are under the size of 50. So I don't know if that's something that you got, you would be able to maybe talk with health department, maybe get us. For us, we just need to know one way or the other. It's like, is this even going to be an option? Because we're trying to make decisions, but it's hard for us, because we're not getting clear guidance from the county that's saying, no, we absolutely can't. But we're also not being told, well, yes, we can go ahead. being told, well, yes, we can go ahead and put together a variance, and we'll see if we can make something happen. It's been a little difficult on our end.
John, I'll follow up with the health department folks. So I will do that, and see if I can get any more guidance, clear guidance. I still think there's value in submitting a variance, and then they have something in writing that you've submitted, and also your ideas, your ideas on how such an event could occur, where, you know, physical distancing is, you know, it would be outside, folks would be outside, and that makes a difference. You're right that, at this point, public gatherings are limited to 50 folks, and that we can't predict what it will be like July 4th. But I know, for example, one of the ideas that was discussed with this regional, this concept of a regional Fourth of July celebration, was that people could gather and be in their cars or something like that, to be able to observe the fireworks. And so I will certainly follow up, John Gator, and I still encourage you folks to submit the variants. Is it a really long, detailed process, or is it pretty straightforward, as far as, because I have not done this, submitting something?
I don't know on the variance side.
Okay.
Whoops, sorry about that. I don't know what I did. But from our standpoint, with the things that we do, we obviously have a parade, and then we've got vendors, and then we have fireworks. So there's a, it's a very involved, and I'm just learning this process now, but our Fourth of July is fairly involved. So for us, it's, it's like if we know they're going to say absolutely you can't do it, for us to try and work out how on earth we're going to be able to socially distance, you know, 3,000, 4,000 people in downtown Wellington. If it's something where we're being told by the county, you can't even have 50 people, it's kind of like, for us, it's like, well, it's pointless for us to have people spend, you know, 10, 15, 20 hours trying to put together a plan of, okay, how can we do this, when we're being told, well, if it's anything over 50, you can't even do it. So that's...
I'll look into it, John.
Okay, thank you, John. I appreciate it.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, I was hoping maybe I can give DB a little bit of advice. If he's on the phone, she's on the phone, they're on the phone, star nine is how you unmute yourself if you're on the phone. But Rebecca, looks like maybe Rebecca can talk a little bit about the T-bar. So Rebecca, go ahead and unmute.
Thank you. The last update I have, John, it's not very extensive, but the T-bar has been one of our applicants for the expansion program, so that is good news. And then the last time I stopped in for pickup, they were doing some pretty significant remodeling things inside, so that was exciting to see. But other than that, I don't have any of them. But those were some pretty cool things. I'm glad they're participating, and I'm glad they took advantage of this time not having customers in their building, so they could do some of the remodeling.
Thank you, Rebecca. And I know with the relatively new owners, you know, that was part of their plan, of course, that is part of their plan, to remodel the T-bar in. And I'm really curious, the area where we generally have our community conversations over there by the pool tables, just wondering how they've reconfigured that, and hoping that maybe, if not in July, maybe in August, we might be able to gather there, you know, again, following public health protocols. And they've got that big parking lot just to the east, and, you know, maybe there's a creative way that they can do some outdoor dining there.
Submitted their, you know, proposed areas that they'll be expanding to, so I haven't checked on the status, but as of yesterday, we had two completed applications, so I'm hoping that's one of them. Also, the owners have been involved in some of our other projects through town, Wellarama, one of our big music festivals, we're, of course, considering delaying it or canceling it for this year, but there are going to be some big volunteers for that project going forward, so that was great news.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Is DB able to pose their question in the Q and A part of this? Is that another suggestion?
That was exactly what I was just going to suggest, because I don't think DB is going to be able, for whatever reason, it doesn't look like we can get them unmuted. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to lower DB's hand, but DB, please ask your question in the Q and A section, that's at the bottom of your screen too, and hopefully we can hear from you that way. But then, let's move on. It looks like Judy Ray has a question. So Judy, I'm going to allow you to talk, and then you'll probably have to unmute yourself. And Judy, the unmute is at the bottom-left part of your screen, because we can't hear you yet.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, if I raised my hand, it was an accident, so there's a raise hand, lower hand here, so I apologize. But I am enjoying this. I just moved to Wellington, and so it's nice to sit here and listen to the concerns. And thank you, Commissioner Kofalas. I've always been a big fan of yours, and so anyway, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Judy. It's nice to have at least one fan these days.
Oh, you got a fan, don't you worry, lots of them.
Okay.
Thank you, Judy.
Okay.
Darn, I wish there was a really good...
We don't have any questions.
Yeah, DB.
Yeah, I keep trying to unmute, but I think it's something on their end that they need to press the button to unmute themselves. Again, DB, if you, I'm going to keep you up there to allow you to talk, in case you figure out how to unmute yourself. But, you know, again, star nine, if you're on the phone, that might work too. Oh, it looks like George Reed raised his hand, so I'm going to allow George to talk now. So George, I'm going to allow you to talk, and you're going to have to unmute yourself. We can't hear you, George. We'll give him a second to see if he can find, let me see if I can try to unmute you. No, the unmute's in the bottom-left part of your screen, George.
And that icon is located right next to the stop video icon. Oh, there you go, George.
There you go. Yeah.
Good job. So, you hear me?
Yes.
You hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you know, I'm, have been distracted by the virus situation here, and it comes to my mind, being wholly sort of committed to that, that I have not paid attention to the land use in Lammert County. And I have thought that the model of community outreach was the most fantastic, beneficial, realistic model that I've seen in government community outreaches, and so on. And so it occurred to me that I would like to point out that just my perception is that, whoops, what is going on? And I got a very nice reply there. However, it seems to me that we're in a pause mode, perhaps, on that two- or three-year, maybe two-year process of collecting, well, establishing communities and dividing the county up, and collecting the people's opinions for their piece of ground, and so on. And I think, as I said before, it's a great model. However, I wonder, as we look to the future, if we can just pick up and hope that we're going to get back to a normal, and so we'll just keep building on the process that has been collected, versus maybe our world really is going to be significantly turned upside down. And our thoughts on how we're going to use our land, and who might be coming here and whatnot, are just totally different than they were in the last two years. And I just hope that, you know, we don't just proceed on what our opinions were over the last two years, because there is a possibility, at least, as I'll repeat myself, of our world almost turning upside down there. And that's been just great work, and by great people. And I don't envy them putting down that paperwork and saying, let's start all over again. But I hope that they will virtually start all over again. Thank you very much, and, yeah, I, you know, for the last couple of weeks, well, after some of the protests were on TV, I don't watch the news anymore, I read the newspaper, that's about it. So thank you for your efforts, and I think you were, John, largely responsible for that new model on community outreach. What do I do now, Michelle, to mute?
George, and I hope, I'd like to respond to your, yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. Specifically on the, first of all, I'm glad you brought up what you brought up about the land use code update process, and it brings, it reminds us that even though one of the issues front and center is the county's response to the public health emergency, and also as we transition into this, and I haven't talked about this a whole lot, but this idea of the Lammert County Long-Term Recovery Collaborative. So there are some very specific things occurring to move, you know, to move us in the direction of recovery four months from now and beyond. But to your, to the issue you raised, George, about the land use code 2020 update process, it has not been paused. The, our planning people, Matt LaFerty and Leslie Ellis and others, continue to work with the consultants. And as, if you look at the website, LUC2020, lammert.org, LUC2020, you will see the different phases of this process. And so far, we have seen some details about the first phase installment, which had to do with procedures and other kinds of things. And then the other, recently, there was a presentation to the planning commission, as well as the county commissioners, we had a joint work session, I think it was last week or so, and we received information about installment two, which looks at different zoning districts and different ideas that are out there. So the process is moving forward, and hopefully you know how to access that, you know, the details of what I've just shared, but it is moving forward. You're welcome, sir. And again, the county does a lot of different things, and that work continues in terms of, you know, fixing potholes, making sure that people are safe, all of those kinds of things. And we've just had to adjust, because people are still working a lot from home. Now we've opened the county building, the courthouse, we will likely be opening some of the other buildings in the coming weeks. So again, this is our way of transitioning back to, you know, what's likely going to be the new normal. Things are not going to go away with the concerns about the coronavirus, and it would not be in anyone's interest if we aren't careful or cautious, recognizing that folks have to go back to work. But if we're not careful and cautious, this is Colorado, South Dakota, I don't know the details of that, but ultimately, we don't want to go backwards, where we have a surge in hospitalizations, we exceed our capacity, and all of those kinds of things. We want to be able to keep moving forward.
All right, thanks, George.
Thank you, George.
All right, we do have a question on the Q and A from Jody Shaddick McNally. Hi, Jody. Jody asked, she has a question about the status of the county budget with women concerns of shortfall on the horizon. Any updates to where the discussions are currently?
Well, thank you for the question, and obviously, that's an issue that's a high priority. June 10th, which I believe is next Wednesday or so, we will have our budget retreat with our budget director and budget analyst. So June 10th, that meeting should be posted. We will be meeting, I think, out of the Horstith Information Center to discuss, you know, the current situation with the county's budget. We've already been looking at, you know, various things we can do to address the revenue shortfall. I think, as Jody knows and other folks know, because the county is less dependent on sales tax revenue, in fact, the .810% total that is attributed to the county in terms of sales tax, it's all dedicated either for open space, behavioral health, and those kinds of things. So because we are, we rely more on property tax, the impact will be somewhat delayed. So we are looking at revenue shortfall for this year, we've made some adjustments, 2020 that is, and we're also looking at how to adjust the budget for 2021, including personnel costs. We're not looking at layoffs or furloughs or those kinds of things, but there are some creative things we can do with pay structures and all of that. One of the biggest concerns that the county has regarding revenue, to be able to carry out the services, is that because of the Gallagher Amendment, folks know that we have a residential assessment rate, and we have a non-residential assessment rate, and the Gallagher Amendment sets in the Constitution the amount of property taxes that can be collected from residential properties and commercial and ag and other kinds of properties. That's the biggest concern, and that is because residential homes and things of that nature continue to appreciate in value, whereas a non-residential, the value has gone down. And so the Constitution requires that an adjustment be made to the residential assessment rate. If that occurs, then there will likely be a pretty significant hit on the county budget in 2022. So we have a budget retreat on the 10th, we are looking at different scenarios, we have good reserves, we've had to make some adjustments in terms of capital improvement projects, but ultimately, we are, you know, we're addressing the issue. addressing the issue.
Sorry, there, I couldn't get myself unmuted. Thank you, Commissioner. Thanks, Jody. And Jody just had a quick follow up that doesn't necessarily need a response. So she said, thank you, Commissioner Kofalas. Yes, my concerns refer to behavioral health initiative since it relies on sales tax.
Well, just to add, if I may, Jody, Michelle and others, I, we, I think we may be looking at perhaps a 25% reduction in sales tax revenue. So that has implications in terms of the, the uses of that sales tax money. I do know that in 2020, the year that we are currently in, we, you know, we're moving ahead with the behavioral health facility, which if all goes well, we will begin construction on that in 2021. In terms of dollars that are made available to the community, Jody is probably aware and others should be aware that the commissioners we approved, it was about $115,000 from the behavioral health tax revenue as a COVID-19 crisis response fund. And there were nine nonprofit organizations, including groups like Crossroads, Safe House, and, and other organizations that receive funds to specifically deal with mental health issues, behavioral health issues related to the, the public health situation. And as of June 1st, the, the normal grant cycle, which is now about 2.3 million, that information is out there on the website, on the behavioral health website. And nonprofits can apply for funds to help with, you know, these kinds of issues in the community. So that is available as well. So those monies are in place, the plans for the behavioral health facility are in place, but we will likely have to make some adjustments at some point because sales tax revenue is down and it will affect, you know, the money that goes for behavioral health.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think we're going to move on to our next hand raise. So Richard Seaworth, you just need to get yourself unmuted and go ahead.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes. Hello.
Commissioner, thank you for doing this. I appreciate it. I guess I'm a bit more optimistic than some. I just did hear you say, though, that you're not going to do anything for property taxes for those of us who got shut down through the virus. So that, that's my understanding. Is that correct?
And, and repeat your question again, Richard.
Okay. Well, they mentioned before that maybe we could, there'd be a little bit of help on the property tax end for those businesses. I have the, own the gym here in Wellington and it's, so we had a rent problem there. And that property tax is extremely high. And I'm assuming that's going to stay that
I see.
That way until we get the fact that the values went down. So, and the gentleman before, I don't know, he just asked if that could be done. And I'm assuming that can't be done. Is that correct?
That, that's, I mean, that's correct. You know, because of the, the constitutional amendment, the Gallagher Amendment, which the, the voters passed, I think, back in 82, it, it kind of locks in these ratios. And, and at, at the state level, Richard, in the legislature, there is a, something for folks to be aware of. There is a, what's called a concurrent resolution, 001, Senate Concurrent Resolution 001, which has bipartisan support. And basically, this would be a referendum, a referred measure to the voters. And it would be repeal of the Gallagher Amendment. And that's something that, you know, if it passes both chambers of the legislature with two thirds majority, because it is a referral, a referred measure to the voters, then that could be on the ballot in November for folks to consider repealing the Gallagher Amendment. The currently non-commercial, non- residential rate is 29%. It would eliminate that and it would allow for some flexibility. But ultimately, ag, ag land is also assessed at that rate. And so if the voters, if this gets on the ballot and the voters approve it, we're also looking at how we can lock in or freeze the residential assessment rate. If the residential assessment rate has to go down from its current percentage, 7.15% to perhaps 5.88% next year, when we do the, the reassessments, the reappraisals of people's property, that would result in a, a pretty significant revenue loss in 2022. So I, I don't know. Hopefully, I'm, I'm answering your question. I, I do know that there have been some extensions of, you know, paying one's property taxes, but I'd have to follow up with the, the county treasurer, or maybe I read, or Michelle has more details there. I don't know what the current status of that is. If not, we, I certainly can follow up if that's what your question is about, Richard, and that is more time to, you know, to, to pay the, or, or set up a payment plan if that's an issue for, you know, some farmers or, or some businesses.
I don't have anything to add, Commissioner.
Okay. I, my question just was that I wanted to be clear on how that is. Actually, I'm a little more optimistic than some people are. I, I'd like to get away from kind of follow up on George's. I'd like to have your comments on where we are with the dump, where we are with Al Canyon Road, and why the county has changed its stance on Box Elder a little and why the staff did that. So those are just three questions I'd like to have you come up, answer, or at least tell us what's going on.
Okay. Thanks, Richard. Regarding the dump, you know, the, those, that's moving ahead. We actually have a meeting coming up, I think, next week of our Solid Waste Policy Council. And we'll be discussing, you know, the, the current state of affairs with regard to the, the landfill. The plan is still to, you know, we're in the process of getting approval from the Department of Public Health and Environment, the state folks. And, and the plan still is to construct a state of the art landfill in, in the, in the location that has been identified north, north of Wellington County Road, is it County Road 15 and 70, perhaps? So that, that's moving forward. Again, a lot of the, the, the money to pay for that is a collaborative effort, but also it's based on money that the county has put in the bank, you know, based on, on landfill fees over the years. With the current landfill, the, you know, the recycling operation will be there. And, and the transfer station will be there, you know, and, and so that's moving forward as well. We have a, a site plan, design, and, and all of that is moving forward. Does that answer your question of regarding the dump, Richard?
Yes. I, I didn't know there were some water issues there. I wonder if those have been resolved?
When, when you say water issues, are you referring to the current landfill site? Or, or are you referring to the, the new site up, up north?
Yeah, the new site up north. You have to have so much firefighting water and dust suppression. And last, I knew you didn't have that. So I was just curious.
Sure. I, I'm afraid I don't know the answer to that question, but I can, I can follow up and, and get you an answer.
Okay. Thank you.
As far as, you're welcome, sir. As, as far as the Al Canyon Road, I mean, that is also, you know, the different phases. You know that we paved the, the section of Al Canyon Road between, is it 15 and, and 19, I, I think. And so that phase has, has occurred. We, we are going to be maybe towards the end of the year, working on the west end of Al Canyon Road. And then the third phase ultimately is to complete the, you know, the, the portions of the road that, you know, take us out to I-25. It, it was interesting that recently I, I received a text message from somebody up at Red Feather Lakes who must use that road, indicating that on the west, where the, the pavement ends on the west side, on the west side of Al Canyon, there was an enormous hole in the road. And, and I was able to contact our Road and Bridge Director, Todd Jurgens, and they said they would send somebody out right away to determine, you know, what kinds of repairs needed to, to occur. But the Al Canyon Road project is continuing to move forward based on the timeframe. If you go to the website, Lamar County Planning, Engineering, there are more details that are available regarding that. Have I answered that question to your satisfaction, Richard?
Yeah, I just wondered if it was still moving forward or whether the budget was going to stop.
No, it, it is, you know, those monies are in place in terms of already planned for road improvements. And, and so, so that, that project is moving forward, yes. And, and then the third area, what was the third area you were asking about?
The Box Elder. At our meeting last Tuesday, Eric just said to me, he said, Richard, we're, the county's come out now, we're not going to stand for any augmentation water. You want to have, do a big dredging deal and a, a drain and I, I, that's got some legal concerns. And so I was just wondering how that happens. I, I'm on that board and your staff just changed directions on me and never even notified me till the meeting. So is that normal or how does it work?
Yes. Thank you, Richard. I don't know the answer to your question. I know that I'm the, of course, I'm the county, the Commissioner liaison to the, the Box Elder Regional, you know, Basin Regional Stormwater Authority. I will follow up with Eric Tracy to find out exactly what the details are of this decision that you've shared and, and how that process took place. And so that's, those are two things that I'll get back to you on. One is the, the Box Elder issue and the, you know, what needs to be done there and what decisions have been made. And the other one is regarding water issues for the, the proposed landfill site up north.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Richard. Judy has her hand up. Let's see if Judy really wanted to ask a question this time. Judy, just go ahead and unmute yourself.
Here we go. Okay. Thank you. That was on purpose this time. And I just wanted to make sure that Commissioner Kofalas is aware that the green turn arrow has been added to the stoplight at the intersection of College Avenue and Terry Lake Road in Fort Collins. I had a wreck there recently and I thought that could have totally been prevented. It was my fault, but it could have been prevented if I had had a green arrow to help me turn. I was so busy, I could not see if anything was coming. And then I was also told that there would be a stoplight put up at the intersection of Douglas Road and Terry Lake Road, which was very welcome news. I come up that way frequently. And then I realized, a lot of people do who are going to Wellington, I hadn't moved here yet, but I realized, no, that's very necessary to know those things to keep everybody safe. So I just want to make sure Commissioner Kofalas has been informed. I reminded them to please do so. And I'm not sure it was done.
Thank you, Judy. And, and I'm well aware of the intersection, the Y intersection right there by Puta Valley Mobile Home Park. We did have a hand, the county did have a hand in working with the city of Fort Collins. Martina Wilkinson was one of their traffic folks, engineers. And, and, and I'm glad that we were able to get at least, I think, coming from the north, there is a, a left turn signal that is there that allows us to turn on to Highway One safely. And then coming from the south from Fort Collins, there's also a left turn signal, because that was a, a concern that the, the folks who live in Puta Valley Mobile Home Park were saying it was pretty tricky to make the left turn to get into their, into their home. So I'm very glad that that has taken place and I am aware of it. And I appreciate you wanting to make sure that I am aware of it. Regarding the, the traffic light on Douglas Road and, and Highway One, has any, any works begun on that? Have you seen?
I haven't seen any. I was through there just a few days ago and haven't seen anything.
Well, what I can tell you there, and unless something has changed and I can follow up with our county engineer, Mark Peterson, and that is that when folks asked me about this previously, the information I had was that this summer we would, the, the work would begin, again, it's a collaborative effort with the city, but this summer, the work would begin to install that traffic light at that intersection. It also has to include CDOT, the Department of Transportation, because of course, Highway One is, is state. So my understanding is that that's supposed to start happening. And I thought summer and I thought July, but certainly if that's different, I will let you and other, we can let folks know.
Okay. Great. Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Judy. Okay, it looks like DB has their hand up, so let's try to get DB unmuted. Go ahead and unmute your phone. You're allowed to. Again, you can hit star nine if you're on the phone or the unmute is going to be in the lower left part of your screen. Doesn't look like you're muted, DB, so keep trying. Again, DB, you can ask your question in the Q and A part. It doesn't look like we're going to get you unmuted. So use the Q and A section and we can answer your question. And Commissioner, I'm not having other questions or other hands raised. So if you want to talk about anything else, this would probably be a good time to do it.
Thanks. Thank you, Michelle. I think that, well, first of all, the next time we're scheduled to have this virtual, or this community conversation, would be probably right around, I haven't looked at my calendar, around the 4th of July. And so I wonder, one consideration is, especially when we're trying to figure out about the 4th of July celebration, we may want to delay or not have the July meeting. It's really up to folks. And then in August, continue. And maybe by August, we could actually be up at the T-Bar Inn, either outside or spaced accordingly inside. Anyone have any, any thoughts, feedback regarding July's virtual community conversation?
Commissioner, I'm going to put up a poll real quick if you give me a second.
Thanks. Thank you, Michelle. And while Michelle is doing that, I guess I could speak briefly about this recovery, long-term recovery collaborative. And so we, we have brought on, in collaboration with United Way of Lambert County, a long-term recovery manager. And we've created this framework. And there are four areas that we've identified that are critical areas. And there is a document about this. But one is housing and human services. One is workforce, small business and economic development. Another is community support services, which kind of overlaps a lot of this. And then the other one is government, education, and policy. Within those four areas, there are a variety of task forces. And so this is the framework that we've put in place to look at what, you know, what we're doing well and what needs to be done better in order to allow for Lambert County to recover from this public health emergency. So folks should be aware of that. And I think that's a very positive step forward.
Hey, John, we do have the poll open right now. So people can vote right now if they haven't already. We've only had about five people.
Yes, I've seen, I saw that the poll was open. Thanks, Michelle. And I understand that the two of us are not able to vote, so. I hope folks will put a yes or no in there about whether or not to have a meeting in July. That would inform me about what we should be doing.
So right now, it looks like we have about six for yes and three for no.
Okay, okay. Well, we'll give that some thought and figure out what the exact date would be if we stuck with it Thursday morning. And we'll let people know, of course. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to end the poll. And then it looks like we have a question. Rebecca would like to make sure that Wellington is represented on the recovery task force. And she'd like to know if there's any new opportunities to.
Yeah, so Rebecca, I would suggest that if there's a specific person from the town of Wellington that you think is best suited to, or persons, I should say, either from public and, public and private sector, those suggestions should be submitted, you know, certainly to me, but also our recovery manager is, her name is Laura Levy. And I know we're taking suggestions, ideas on persons who should be on this, you know, involved in this recovery collaborative. Laura Levy, I, her email address is not the same as the county one. It's a little bit different. Do you know what that is by any chance, Michelle?
What I can do, I can look it up. I don't have it offhand right here, but I can look it up and we can get it sent to Rebecca.
And Rebecca, if it's easier for you, if you wanted to submit the names of folks who should be on that recovery collaborative effort, like your economic development person and others, or people from the business community, you can send them to me and I would certainly forward them to Laura Levy and other folks who need to see this.
Okay, I don't have anybody else. We still have DB who has a hand raised or hand raised. But not unmuted, but I don't have any other questions.
It looks like we might be winding down here. And I wish there was a way to find out what DB wanted to ask or say. I'm not sure what the answer is there. But there are a number of things that people raised that I, that I, we need to follow up on. And the initial request was regarding the COVID-19, you know, the modeling that's being used, the data. And we'll certainly get that out. And then there were some more specific requests regarding Box Elder, the landfill water issues, and some other things. The budget retreat is next Wednesday. That's a, that's a posted meeting. Folks can attend and listen. But we are looking at making adjustments to this year's budget and certainly 2021 and beyond. Because the implications of the Gallagher and reduced revenue are real. And we need to, you know, we need to be prepared for that. So I will certainly follow up with folks. We'll make a decision about whether or not to have a meeting in July. And of course, we'll, with Town Trustee Gator, John, will follow up regarding this 4th of July issue and see if we can provide some clarity there. Thank you.
Commissioner, just wanted, wouldn't say we'll post this on our YouTube channel as well. So we'll see.
Michelle, thanks a lot. Folks, I think we're going to sign off. I hope you have a good day and please take care.